It's seven thirty. So, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am calling the January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Temple City Regular Council Meeting to Order, pursuant to AB three sixty-one, signed by Governor Newsom. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address a meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting kept telephonically, please call one six six nine nine hundred six eight thirty-three, meeting ID eight one one, one eight five eight two one eight four, passcode seven eight eight one five five, or through the city's live webcast on YouTube, Connect with TC. Madam City Clerk, please roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
He was muted.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew you were gonna call me the minute I walked away here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Yu?
Here. Thank you. For those calling in, the audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion. Public comment emails received prior to or during the meeting will not be read and will be included in the record. At this time, very happy tonight, we have Pastor Darryl Keltie again with Temple City Community of Christ Church, located at fifty-one, fifty-eight fifty-one, Temple City Boulevard. Pastor Keltie will lead us in invocation. Pastor?
Thank you very much. It's always good to be able to serve you, the city of Temple City. Let us pray. O divine Creator, we, your children, even though by necessity requires us to be separated, are nevertheless together this evening. You conduct the business of this, the city of Temple City. We do so in that this community might become an even better community than it already is. We know that this will not be an easy task, and one considers all the problems and difficulties we face. We know that it's not something that we can do on our own, but only with your divine support can we do this, working hand in hand with all parts of the government and the people of the city. It's for this reason that we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we see this world around us as a community, as your divine creations, and we are its caregivers. We know there's something we can do without, not do without your help and guidance. Therefore, let this be our prayer for you this evening. That through what we do this night, tomorrow in the following day, the day after, we may tap into your direction. That we may live this community, a better community, we've already founded. Yes, we pray in all humility. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me with, in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please put your right hand over your heart and ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance of the United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is ceremonial matters. We have one presentation, and that's a pretty wonderful presentation. It's Holiday Decoration Contest Winners. So, with that, I will turn it over to Director Matsumoto of Parks and Rec, Director. He will report out on the Holiday Decoration Contest. Director Matsumoto?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. Good evening, City Council. I do have the honor of presenting this past year's, in December, Holiday Decorating Contest Winners. So, I think with the pandemic, it really inspired a lot of our residents to really go all out, and we've had some wonderful choices for this year's winners for the Holiday Decorating Contest. We have a total of sixteen residents that will be recognizing, as well as three businesses that were really standout homes and businesses in the community this past year. At the end of the presentation, we did have some confirm that they were going to be present. So maybe we can check in and see at the end of the presentation if any of our winners are here and if they would like to say a few words afterwards. But I'll go ahead and get started with our residential winners first. So, our first is one thirty-six Doreen. Again, a wonderful display that was selected for one of our winners. One zero two seven four Live Oak Avenue.
Beautiful.
One zero five two zero Key West. Oh, one zero seven zero nine Millland Street. Fifty-nine forty-seven Agnes. Nine eight zero eight Dean's Drive. Nine eight one nine Nadine Street. Five two two six Willmonte Avenue. Nine three zero nine Broadway. Five five three eight Cloverly Avenue. Nine four three four Lemon Avenue. Six two five one Primrose Avenue. Eight six zero two Garibaldi Avenue. Six one three two Loma Avenue. On the same street, six four thirty-six Loma Avenue. Nine zero one nine Rancho Real Road. And then on to our three businesses. Business from the very familiar with Temple City Bike Shop, our first business winner. Second, it was such a grand display. We were only able to fit in so much, but Camilla Square, they always do a wonderful job during the holiday season. And then finally, we have our Temple City Barber Shop that was recognized as our third business winner. Now, each one of the winners were given lawn signs as recognition for twenty twenty-one Holiday Decorating Contest winners, and that was done the week of December twentieth. So, everyone was able to proudly display their winning lawn sign during the holiday season. And then we'll be following up as well with certificates recognizing the winners from the mayor. So that will be going out to all of our winners shortly. Overall, it was a wonderful experience. I want to extend my gratitude to the City Council and to our Parks and Recreation Commission. Not only did they serve as a nomination committee, they toured the, literally, the entire city, looking and scouring the community for these standout homes, and both bodies also voted on all the winners. And it was a very tough decision. I know there were a lot that were competing for this year's winner. So, again, I would like to extend my thanks and appreciation for the council and the commission, as well as to all the winners. You know, you really helped brighten up the community during the holidays. You know, now more than ever, you know, just bring so much joy to Temple City, and we love being able to recognize all of those that participate this year. So, that would conclude my report, Mayor Yu.
Thank you, Director Matsumoto. Congratulations to all the contestants. And truly, it was a hard judge, hard time to judge. I mean, I look at so many of those pictures, and they look so, so very pretty. So, I don't know about the rest of you, but it seems like we had more decorations this year than previous years. So, congratulations. And on behalf of the City Council, want to again recognize all sixteen winners for the Holiday Decoration and bring so much joy and festivity to Temple City. Thank you. Actually, I don't see any, anyone, any contest winners tonight. So.
I think Jeff and Susan Nichols had mentioned they might jump on, as well as John Hensley. But I'm not sure if TC one, two, or three of those are outside logins, or that's with city staff.
Those belong to Red Media.
Okay. So, then in that case, it looks like they weren't able to log on for tonight's meeting. But again, we'll be following up with all of them, providing them, in addition to their lawn signs in December, their certificates from the mayor as well.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. So, we'll move on to the next item, which is public comment on items not listed on the agenda. The time for public comment starts now. I will ask any members of the public watching at home to call in at a Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. Madam City Clerk, are there any public callers? I do not see any on my screen.
Mayor Yu, I, there are no public callers, and there are no email requests to speak.
Okay. We'll give it a little bit more time. Well, it doesn't appear that we have any callers. So, with nothing more from the public and the reasonable time been given, I will close public comment and move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is the Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. If members of the City Council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. So again, I will ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at a Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. While the public is calling in, I would like to ask the rest of the City Council, do you have any questions for staff for any of the consent calendar items? So, seeing none, we wish, let's give it a little bit more time for the public to call in. So, Madam City Clerk, are there any callers?
No, sir, Mayor. There are no callers.
Okay. With nothing from the public and the reasonable time have been given for them to call in, I will close public comment for consent calendar. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
It's moving second. Madam Clerk, roll call. Vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. So the consent calendar has been approved. Next item is public hearing. We have one item, which is establish the Community Development Block Grant Programs and allocations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. With that, I'll turn over to Mr. Brian Cook, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Yu, and members of the council. Before you tonight is our normal yearly public hearing related to our community block grant funding allocations, which is roughly around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You may remember several months ago, we did come to you and ask you for any additional direction that you wanted to provide us. That direction is reflected in the public notice that was provided and the program priorities that have been developed going forward. So, with that, Mayor Yu, if I may, I'll turn it over to Mr. Golick, who is our program administrator with this program.
Mr. Golick, good evening. Please proceed.
Sorry, trying to pull up the presentation.
Sorry, Adam. I was too fast for you.
That's all right. Take your time.
Do you guys see the presentation?
Not quite yet. Oh, there is. It's coming through. There is. Yeah. We can see it.
Sorry.
Maybe you can do it as, yeah, make them a slideshow.
It's showing up on my other screen. Sorry.
There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that.
Ah, no problem. Please go ahead.
So, tonight before you are recommendations that we previously discussed in November about the CDVG program. The Housing Rehabilitation Program is one of our popular programs. It typically assists anywhere from three to six households per year. I just spoke with our consultant this morning, and we actually have twenty-five people that are currently on our waiting list right now. The asbestos and lead-based paint testing removal program, that's an associate program with the Home Improvement Program, and that depends on the type of work that's being involved. And the last one is the Youth Scholarship Program. This program's typically limited to fifteen percent of the city's annual allocation. However, the LA CDA has given, bumped that up to twenty percent. And that typically serves anywhere from eighty to a hundred scholarships. So the past couple of years, those numbers have been low for, for, due to COVID or delays with the program. So the recommendation tonight is to approve the ongoing programs with these amounts here, hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred for the Housing Rehab Program. There's breakdown there for the housing consultant costs, which is up to twenty percent of the budget. Same for the asbestos-led testing and removal program, thirty-five thousand dollars for that, and then the Youth Scholarship Program at thirty-one thousand five hundred. And then the recommendation is to take any input from the public, authorize the city manager to amend these programs up to fifty percent, and then adopt the attached resolution. And I'm available if you guys have any questions.
Mayor Yu, any questions? I have a couple of questions.
All right. Sorry. Yeah.
What does it actually mean when we say authorize the city manager to amend program allocations up to fifty percent? Does that mean Brian can increase the amount? Or, I mean, how does that gonna work if we've already allocated all of the money? Or he can just switch it around, take some from Peter and give the ball, or what does that really mean?
These programs are preliminary, or the amounts in the that are in the staff report. So we don't know, one, what the final allocation is yet from the, from HUD. It's estimated, usually the LA CDA tells us to plan on just doing kind of the level funding or the same funding as the previous fiscal year. So that's two hundred and five thousand. And then we just usually include, we're looking at the numbers right now. We have some unallocated funds, which are loans that are paid back from previous or previous participants, whether they sell their house or refinance and take money out. So it's just an estimate that the money's getting, or that the overall budget for the program will be two hundred and fifty thousand by the start of the fiscal year.
Oh, so this, this language is, would allow Brian then, if let's say we get more than two hundred and fifty to, I guess, increase the allocations? Or if we get less than two hundred and fifty, to decrease, to decrease the allocation?
Correct. Correct.
All right. And who determines how much an applicant for a youth scholarship gets? In other words, I was, you may have explained this before, but I can't remember. So let's, I know we have approximately, let's say, thirty-one thousand dollars to give out. So, a someone, a member of our youth will fill out an application. Is there a set amount that they can get, like a maximum amount? Or how does that determine what the amount is for individual?
I don't think that there's a maximum amount, but the, there are different levels that they could qualify for. So if they're a moderate income household, then they require for, or they would be eligible for less of a scholarship. I think it's fifty percent of the regular cost of the recreation fees. And then if you're lower, extremely low, I believe you're eligible for a seventy-five percent scholarship.
Okay. So for all of these scholarships, then they'll look at the family income in determining the amount. So, for example, with, and I think, isn't, correct me if I'm wrong, but let's say someone who's playing youth football or Little League in the city, they can apply for these scholarships to pay their signup fees, correct? Are they limited to just city-run programs?
I can.
Maybe, Adam, do you know?
Yes, definitely. So for the CDVG funds for the scholarship program, that would be strictly for city-run programs. Okay. So, it only covers those programs that are offered by the city. However, we do have the Camellia Trust Fund, and that could be utilized for programs outside the city or not run by the city. So there is another avenue for scholarships or supplemental funding for those low or very low-income families.
And do our leagues, are they aware of that? As you have, to your knowledge, has, has anybody taken advantage of that from our local leagues, like Little League or youth football or soccer or anything like that?
The Camellia Trust Fund, we've tried to publicize it, but it is definitely not as utilized as the Youth Scholarship Program. I believe that the Little League programs do actually offer their own scholarship opportunities. But we do have, you know, turnover with the board. So it definitely could be something we bring up at our, bring up at our next youth committee, youth sports committee meeting, so we can make them aware of it.
Yeah, because I, I think you guys meet with the, with the various groups, don't you? The main ones, the soccer, the
Correct. Yes.
I think you still meet. So I would, I would just say, you know, maybe that would be a good time to make them aware of these opportunities. I'm sure you already do, but yeah, that way they know. Because then the reason I bring it up is because I know Little League is kicking off their season. And apparently, many of the Little Leagues, not just, I'm not sure, it's just the Temple City Little League, but they're, they've raised their signup fees quite significantly for whatever reason. I was thinking, well, there's gotta be some way we can, gotta help these out. Because they, for the most part, they are Temple City residents, so. All right. Great. Thank you. That, that's all I have, Vince.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Moving on to council question again, Councilmember Mann, you have any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sternquist, any questions? Mayor Protem, you are mute. Well, while we're waiting for Mayor Protem, maybe I'll ask my question.
Am I unmuted now?
Now you're unmuted. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I have just one simple question, Mr. Golick. So, I read that we have twenty-five people on the waiting list for the housing rehabilitation loan and any worker grant. So, if we allocate hundred eighty-three thousand, do we even know how many people would benefit of the twenty-five people on the waiting list?
We don't. Kind of the difficult thing with the program is we have, we offer both a loan and a grant. So, when our consultant goes out and talks to the homeowner and sees kind of what improvements that that they need, whether maybe they want like a bathroom improved, or some improvements in the bathroom or kitchen. But the consultant's out there and sees that the roof is in really bad shape, then they may try to persuade them to go for a loan. Or it could be a combination of a loan and a grant. So it really depends on when our consultant goes to the site and sees what kind of improvements are needed and that the owner agrees to doing.
Okay. Thank you. So if I remember correctly, correctly, you said we typically have five, it would benefit five to six applicants every year?
It could be anywhere from three to six. It really just depends on what kind of, if they do only a grant. You know, if we get maybe ten people that only want to do a grant, then, then that would cover the cost for that, or okay, one loan, or something like that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Golick. That's all the questions I have. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing. So it is time for the public to call in, watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you are on, the city clerk will make sure you are able to speak. So we'll give it a little bit of time for folks to call in. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public calling in?
Mayor Yu, I apologize. Ms. Taryn is on the line. She is a caller. I will ask her if she wished to unmute to speak.
All right. Hi, Ms. Taryn. You want to address the council on this item?
I did not need to address the council on this item.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. So with that, it would, we have enough time open for the public call in. I will close public comment, and it's time for count any final questions or comment for the council. So I'll go around the city council, starting with Councilmember Mann. Any final questions or comments?
Oh, no, I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final questions or comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viscara. Councilmember Chavez?
Yeah, refresh my recollection. Who is our city consultant on all these programs?
It is Sandy Medrano, who has worked, previously worked for Will Dan, is now on her own. We, we've gone out to RFP before for those services, and she's been the most qualified and knows our program the best. So she's been with us for several years and has done a good job of administering the program from a technical standpoint, which there are a lot of technical aspects to H, CD, CDA and HUD's guidelines related to this program.
And when did she become, she go out on her own and become the?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Golick on that one.
It was, this is the first fiscal year she's on her own.
Okay. So up to now, we've had Will Dan before. Now, this is the first year that she's gonna do it on her own. Correct. We went out for RFP on this, this year, last year, whenever?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Mayor Protem Sternquist, any final questions or comments?
I do have one question of Adam. Adam, do you have an idea of how many people have a change in what they originally wanted done? When they fill out an application and say, they say, well, I'd like to have my kitchen Wanted done? When they fill out an application and say, they say, well, I'd like to have my kitchen rehabbed or. I need a non-working bathroom fixed or whatever that may be. Do you know how many are actually, you know, asked to possibly change? Such as you mentioned that the person, the consultant might see a roof that needs repair done?
We don't know, um, I don't know if we keep track of it. I, I could ask the, I mean, we could. Look at the interest form that originally filled out. We typically don't call applicants, maybe a year or two, depending on how many people are on the waiting list and the funding. Um, so that could change over time, but um, yeah, we could certainly look into that and, and report back to you.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, um. You know, when someone has worked with a company such as Will Dan. Will Dan, there's, there's a lot of checks and balances, I think, and I'm just concerned that, you know. If someone is by themselves, they. I mean, I'm not, I don't know the person, but. I would just hate someone to have their heart set on, well, I would really like to do this because this is important to me. And then they do have. Another problem that. You know, and, and just be persuaded to do something secondary to what they actually would have liked to have done. I don't know what those technicalities are that they look at, you know, to see. But um, you know, homeowners usually are pretty much know what they're comfortable having done.
And you know, Cindy, I think you bring up a good point that maybe next time this comes around, maybe we should have. Our city uh consultant here to answer any of those questions. And those concerns, a little late for it now, but maybe just a thought that next time around. Whoever we've chosen to be the city consultant, because obviously uh they're a big part of this and uh. Some of us may, some of us may have some of those type of questions specifically for them, so.
Right.
Or, or perhaps instead, I mean, it doesn't have to wait till this thing, um, the approval comes from next year. Perhaps we can uh still approve this item tonight or. And I'll vote on this item tonight and um the city manager can bring this item back as a report back.
Yeah, maybe a six month report, maybe halfway through or something like that, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, great, great idea. Yeah, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just one last question. Was there a cost savings by going with just the consultant?
There was in the RFP that went out, um, the consultant's hourly rate was um a little less. Than uh Will Dance.
Okay, um, I just know that when we. With Foothill Transit, when we went out for our, our lobbyists from um, the person left. The lobbyist firm and decided to go her own way and we really liked her and felt she was doing an excellent job. There was a significant. Cost savings that was negotiated, so it's just a question I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, right, I don't have any uh questions and, and I think um. What's before us is something that I can support. So uh with that, um, I am ready for a motion to. Move this forward.
Hey, Mayor Yu, I would make a motion that we authorize the city manager to amend the CDBG funded program. Allocations up to fifty percent of the approved allocation is necessary throughout the fiscal year. And that we adopt Resolution twenty two fifty five seventy five. For Attachment A to the staff report establishing the CDBG funded programs. And allocations for fiscal year twenty two twenty three. We don't need to state the amounts, those are already in there.
Yes. Right, thank you.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's moving second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Mann.
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist.
Uh, you're on mute.
Yes, I'm sorry, but my dog is right near here and she's starting to cry, so I'm gonna go put her out.
Put her out, okay.
I know she's not happy, but let me go put her outside.
Want to hear her vote. So anyways, I um, I also uh, uh, I'll concur. So with that, uh, this item carried and um, we'll move on to the next item. Uh, question unfinished business, there is none. And next item is new business is a request from the Temple City Camellia Festival. For postponement of the twenty twenty two Camellia Festival. With that, I. I will go to Mr. Cook first.
Thank you, Mayor Yu and Members of the Council. Uh, Mr. Matsumoto will present, uh, Ms. Taryn. Uh, Festival Director is also here. Thank you to the Camellia Festival, all the volunteers for. Their consideration and making not such a very, making a very tough call, but um. Something from the staff side, uh, we understand, um, and is brought forward to you tonight. As we do have a formal agreement with the Camellia Festival to perform and um. Carry out the carnival, festival and parade. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matsumoto.
Thank you, City Manager Cook. Uh, good evening, good evening again, Mayor, uh, you and members of the city council. Uh. I'll keep the presentation short. Um, the Camellia Festival uh support was previously approved by city council on. Uh, December seventh, and that was for those original dates of February twenty fifth through the twenty seventh. Um, due to the uh COVID surge, COVID nineteen surge with the Omicron variant. The Camellia Festival Executive Board uh met to discuss the uh approved. Uh, dates of the Camellia Festival and parade and to really make a decision on what they felt best moving forward. Uh, the Executive Board uh unanimously unanimously uh thought it was in the best interest of not only. The festival, but the community as well, uh, that the event be postponed. Uh, the, the proposed dates for postponement are May. Uh, twentieth through the twenty second. And uh, those dates really are predicated upon the availability of the carnival vendor used for the Camellia Festival and Parade. So that would be the earliest available date for the carnival vendor. Um, it does work uh for the city in terms of not interfering with any other. Um, existing city events or programs. And um, the uh revised uh dates, as far as we know, don't impact um. The other uh uh programs within the city as well, but we'll be checking in with uh groups like uh Little League and. And those groups as well, cause that's towards the end of their season. Um. We do have Camellia Festival Director Don Taran present as well, uh, in case the. Uh, council has any specific questions regarding the postponement. And again, we are uh requesting that the city council approve the postponement of the twenty twenty two. Camellia Festival and provide the same support that was previously approved on December seventh uh of last year. And that would conclude my report.
Thank you, uh, uh, Ms. Taryn, uh, the festival director, you have anything to add to uh Director Matsumoto's uh? Presentation?
Um, I would like to let you know that um, we did reach out to the school district also, to the Temple City School District, and there is also no conflicts. With uh major conflicts with this school district, because the children of our community are what the event is all about.
Alright, great, thank you for that. Uh, with that, I will uh open, uh, go to the city council for any. Questions that they may have, starting with Councilmember Man. You have any questions?
Just uh generally speaking, it's uh, if I understand, it's the same agreement, we're just transposing the dates over, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and um, kind of a half, half joking question, but does, does Mayor Yu still get to ride in the parade? In May?
No, we'll have to talk about that. We might have to have two mirrors in the parade.
Yeah, I didn't get to ride in last year's parade.
I think we all should ride in the parade.
It's quite okay for me not to ride it. Whoever the mayor at the time should ride it, I think.
I, I think we've all been in a lot of parades. I think we can always just survive, but.
Quite okay not to ride it.
No further questions.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscara.
Are you, uh, Donna, uh, I, I assume this is COVID driven?
Of course.
And do we have some kind of criteria that'll give us, you know? Uh, what, what kind of shape we're gonna be in come, come May? Is there a point where we have to make a decision again?
Well. Uh, you know, we all wa-operate under the same crystal ball. Um, so I, I rely a lot on uh city staff. Um, I, I, both Adam and Brian Arizumi um have been very helpful in um, in coordinating and keeping me informed. Um, you know, like, so, so we'll just have to look at things as they progress. Um, we made the call in January because it was at that point that we were really going to be starting to expend a significant amount of capital. To prepare for the February event. So about two months out is kind of, uh, you know, we're really looking at the numbers.
So in about two months, we'll, we'll, we'll have to decide again, I guess.
Well, I'm hoping that it'll be much better.
Yeah, we all do. Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Yes.
Mayor, just quickly, if May for some reason doesn't work out. Will you just wait until the following year?
Well, I, I would bring it up to the board and it's their ultimate decision and then we would have to need to come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Chavez, any questions?
Thank you. So does this postponement uh also affect the other related events? Um. I mean, are we, like, cause I haven't, I, I know there were some things on the calendar, like coronation and all that kind of stuff. I'm assuming it does.
Yes, all of the events have shifted and a new calendar will be sent to you after this evening.
Does that mean that, uh, so have we, have we selected the, didn't we select the? The court, roll quarter already, or they've been selected? Oh, they haven't.
Play day was supposed to be on the fifteenth, what, um, last weekend.
So that was delayed as well.
Yes.
That's a bummer. Kids, uh, they, they're gonna have a shorter term, I guess, to serve, uh. Than normal, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pretend, do you have any more questions?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. No, I don't have any more questions, thank you. Um, so at this time, I'd like to open up a public comment. And I'll ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at the Zoom number. Once you're on, the city clerk will make sure you're able to speak. So. We'll give people a little bit of time to call in. Uh, Madam City Clerk, uh, are there any public callers?
Mayor Yu, there are no public callers on the line.
Okay, well, uh, with nothing from, nothing from the public and the recent more time have been given for them to call in, I will. Close public comment and go back to the city council for final questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Man.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Yu. Well, first, I, I wanna just uh extend my appreciation to uh. Don Taran Festival Director and, and the entire board. I, I know it's, it was a difficult decision to make. Um. I mean, this is the biggest event in the city every year, so. To, to postpone it because of, of COVID, uh, it, I think. It, it pains us all to, to have to, to do it and uh, do it for the right reasons. Um, but I, I too am hopeful, um, that we will be able to continue this great tradition in May. And uh, let's just uh wait and see. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Viscara.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Chavez.
Kind of a question, I guess, of uh. Wait, uh, the recommendation is that we approve this postponement. And also to provide the same city support as approved at the December seventh council meeting. I'm assuming that gives us. Some discretion to perhaps allow the uh Camellia Festival Board. Come back later on and maybe ask for uh more support than we previously. I don't remember. What type of support we approved in, in December. I'm assuming it's the same thing we've done in the past, but. Given the nature of what's going on in our world today, uh, I could envision a possibility that perhaps. There may be some additional support that the city could, could provide, as pointed out by. Councilmember Mann, this is a big city of net and one that we would like to see come off as best as we can and uh. I would certainly. I guess urge the. Ms. Taryn and, and uh, to go back and, and not hesitate. And if there is anything more that we can do to. To help you to uh get this thing on. You know, I'm sure our council, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm sure our council would certainly. You know, entertain sets of requests.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pretend Sternquist.
Yes, Dawn, I wanted to ask you, is there a financial hit that the Camellia Festival? Would take, should um, we have to cancel again?
It depends on what point we have to cancel. If we, it, one of the reasons we also decided to postpone was because we didn't. Want to have that outlay of money and then to have to cancel it a, a week before the event. So, and it's not just the, the committee that expense funds, it's all of our volunteer groups who prepare for. Their own booths or the, the parade, the, you know, the bands in the parade or the people who are doing floats. Um, you know, all those things are also affected if we cancel at the last minute. So we're hopeful that by postponing it, we're. Hopefully, um, not going to run that risk as high, you know.
And, and, and sh- should it need to be canceled again? Of course, you would look at it prior, two months prior, again, you said to, to see where we're at. If indeed it needed to be canceled at that time, has the Camellia Festival expended funds other than the groups? I mean, directly the Camellia Festival for this year's parade?
Uh, so far, I would say it's fairly minimal what we've expended so far. Yeah.
Okay, and then on average, how many youth groups do we have participating?
And, and the parade or just?
No, in, at the carnival that gets some financial help.
Oh, well, you mean, they, they earn money at the, at the carnival. Um, I would say we probably have about be. Between ten and fifteen groups um who have booths um in various capacity or, or working in various capacities.
Okay, and do you have any idea about? How much, say, the highest earner would make for that three day period?
I can tell you that Relay for Life of Temple City tends to net, they net about four thousand dollars.
Okay.
So they, and I don't know the other groups, um, because uh, like the food groups, for example. I, it depends on how much is donated versus how much they spend. The Camellia Festival's not in, they don't know that end of things. We only know the um, how much they actually taking in revenue. We don't know what the cost is to the groups.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to know that, just to keep it in mind. I'm hopeful that we won't have to cancel. The Camellia Parade, of course, but um. You know, maybe there is something like Councilmember Chavez said that the city can do to help. In some way, so just something I'm thinking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to say, this year, um, we were already planning on our floats not having to require chameleons uh for the, for, so uh. You know, that was the one thing, cause they're all blooming now. If you haven't been around Temple City, they're all blooming. So, you know. So, you know, that that part is not being affected adversely because we weren't counting on it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you for the support of the council. It's truly appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I I don't have any uh anymore uh any questions, just um, you know, I concur, everything has been said and thank you so much and to the uh Camellia Festival organizer, thank you, Ms. Taren, for the great work. And I know it must be painful to move it, but we appreciate you doing it for public health reasons. And again, uh, want to echo the city council's support for Camellia Festival. So with that, I would um I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations from the Camellia Festival to postpone the current date scheduled for the Camellia Festival and move them to the date stated in May. I I don't have the date in front of me.
Twenty to twenty second.
May twentieth through the twenty second.
Right. And provide the same city support.
Yes, and the same city support.
Right. All second.
Okay, smooth and second to Madam Clerk, uh, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Man?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara? Mayor Protam, stern quest?
Yes.
Mayor Yu?
Yes. So the the motion has carried. Uh, thank you again, Ms. Taren.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so we move on to the next item, which is Discussion of a Campaign Contribution Limit Regulation Ordinance. I'll ask Mr. Cook uh to lead us in with the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Yu, uh, and members of the council. I'll provide uh introduction. The city clerk will also provide some technical background as well. Uh, before you tonight is an item that does not need a motion, nor do we need a vote tonight, but we do need uh to get a sense of direction and any questions you have. And even after tonight's uh item, if you have any follow up questions for the city clerk, city attorney, or myself, please provide that direction. Um, this is not the first time the city has uh dealt with campaign finance issues. Um, you may remember it was a while ago in November uh two thousand and sixteen, the city council put on the ballot uh, the Temple City Accountability Act, one one with many provisions, one of which was actually banning uh gifts, campaign contributions uh for certain individual groups, including developers and others. Uh, that has been in in force since two thousand and sixteen. We, as the city, are the enforcement body related to that. So we have been dealing with campaign contribution issues since two thousand and sixteen. We haven't had to enforce that uh to the best of our knowledge because um we only the incumbents have uh have filed campaign committees. So there's been no other outside entities have that have filed campaign committees. So we had, the city does have a history of dealing with campaign finance regulations and contribution limits. So subsequently to that, in January of last year, uh SB, uh, excuse me, AB five seventy one came into effect. And the city clerk will go into a little bit more detail related to that. Um, one of the reasons we didn't bring this forward to you earlier is because it's only been in the last couple of months from the FPP FPPC that we have clarity as to some of the consequences of what this new, what this bill means as if the, and you have two options to, or you have two options to give us some feedback on, stay with the state regulations or stay with or or develop our own ordinance. One of the consequences of not developing your own ordinance was actually related to how you deal with your campaign committees. Essentially, if you default uh to the state, it would mean every year through the FPPC, FPPC, you would have to refile, essentially create a new committee, dissolve the old committee, create a new committee. There are some other provisions that are important for the council to hear about. Give us some feedback about tonight that the clerk will go over as well. Um, so those are uh, that's a very general overview of what's what's there. The other issue, too, is because you do have a history of of having some level of restrictions related to campaign contributions, the state now does set a new limit. Now that may, that limit you may feel is too loo too high. You may want to lower that limit yourself. That is at your discretion. This is an ordinance for uh, the difference between uh Measure AA, the Temple City Accountability Act, and this is that that was a change to the charter. This would be a change to our, or this would be a new ordinance. So that ordinance could be amended over time by a future council or even this council as well. So this would be enacted by a legislative act of the council and uh could be therefore amended in the future by a legislative act of the council. Uh, staff, the city attorney's office, and the city clerk's office have provided you what is the kind of template of an ordinance of what it could look like for you tonight. Um, so with that, I will, if you're okay, Mayor, I will turn it over to the city clerk.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and council members, to the points that city manager has already made. Um, I'm hoping just to add a little bit more um um information and detail to uh uh provide some explanation. So again, the item before you is pertaining to Assembly Bill five seventy one, which became effective on January first, two thousand and twenty one. Assembly Bill five seventy one creates identical campaign contribution limit to those imposed on certain elect elective state office candidate for county and city offices. The state contribution limit for two thousand and twenty one, twenty two is four thousand nine hundred dollars. And the Fair Political Practices Commission, FPPC, adjusts this contribution limit in January of odd number years per the Consumer Price Index rounded to the nearest one hundred dollars. AB five seventy one also provides the FPPC expanded administration and enforcement authority over counties and cities without their own local contribution limits. And make violations of default contribution limits the FPPC's purview punishable as a misdemeanor. Until recently, it was understood that accepting AB five seventy one's contribution limit by virtue of not adopting a separate local ordinance would not require a city or county to accept the bill's other restrictions and requirements. However, within the last two months, uh, it's been made clear by FPPC that failing to act will indeed subject local entities to the bill's other restrictions. Again, mentioned by Mr. Uh, City Manager Cook already, some of the restrictions and are um the requirements related to control committee and bank accounts. Um, AB five seventy one does not affect the city or county's ability to enact its own campaign contribution limit nor to make a determination to adopt or not adopt the bill's other restriction that formally apply only to state level candidates. Um, this information regarding the AB five seventy one's other restrictions are provided in Attachment A of the staff report. City Council has two options this evening regarding uh Assembly Bill five seventy one. The first option is to do nothing and city will default to the limitations of AB five seventy one, which would continue the city's prior practice of default defaulting to state regulation and FPPC enforcement of campaign finance activity. Thus, would subject the city to all of AB five seventy one's restriction. The second option is for city to adopt a ordinance setting its own campaign contribution limit. And there's no language within AB five seventy one that suggests higher or lower local elective office contribution limit. If council decide to set a limit for the city, this would mean that the city would be responsible for enforcing these limits and all other restrictions on campaign finance activity and any related restrictions that the city council adopts. It should be noted that if the ordinance does not contain other restrictions like the ones mentioned in AB five seventy one, the city will not default to the bill's restrictions, meaning that there will not be such restrictions. So at this time, the council has requested to discuss and provide staff direction to either prepare a campaign limit regulations ordinance for council's consideration at upcoming meeting or continue to default to the limitation set by AB five seventy one. This concludes my presentation. Again, King, our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Cook, City Manager, and I are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. Cook. I will start council questions with uh Councilmember Man. Any questions?
So do we have, do we have a deadline that cities have to uh pass an ordinance before the FPPC says you can no longer create a ordinance to, I guess, supersede AB five seventy one?
Not according to FPPC, sorry, sir.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. So this is just largely due to, as you mentioned, in the last two months, it became clearer that FPPC was enforcing this in this manner. Okay. And if, like, and you also mentioned this can be changed legislatively in the future. That's just a simple majority vote for some future council if they decided to change some element of the ordinance.
I I think we would defer to our Assistant City Attorney on that one.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember, uh, man, that's a great question. So uh, this will just be any uh normal ordinance. So that just means you have to go through the normal two readings unless urgency or emergency and pass with the majority of council. Um, but I think the previous comment, which may have led to some confusion, is that the other campaign regulation that we have is a charter um item, and that requires a voter approval before we do that. So uh, this does not have the same requirement. Uh, you know, the council now or in the future, if you want to adjust the limits, change some of the restrictions or whatever, uh, would just either have to um, you know, adopt new ordinance or an ordinance amendment.
Okay. And are we aware of neighboring cities that have uh passed ordinances in response to this? And do we know what what those results may have been, if if that's been discussed at all?
Madam Clerk, you want to point out a couple of cities that have done uh, made some adjustments and done their own ordinances?
Uh, just a quick survey, we're surrounding cities. Um, I'm gonna list some of the cities. City of Alhambra adopted their own um limitation. Uh, fit their limit is fifty dollars. And they make the adjustment of their limitation March of odd number years to reflect any increase or decrease per the California Consumer Price Index, and their adjustments are rounded to the nearest ten dollars. Um, City of Arcadia, City of Duarte, City of Almonte, um, they default to the state's limit and restrictions. City of Rosemeat um also default to the state limit and restriction. City of San Gabriel adopted their own ordinance to follow the state's limitation. And their adjustment uh is the same as the um as AB five seventy one, which is uh January odd number years. Um, and then increase or decrease in the adjustment per California Consumer Price Index adjusted to the nearest hundred dollar. City of South Almani adopted their own uh resolution to follow the state's limit. Um, same uh as as far as the adjustment of limit is concerned and when. City of South Pasadena adopted their own um ordinance and limiting the uh contribution limit to a thousand dollars. Um, but they do not address any um adjustment for their limits.
Wow, that's, did I hear fifty dollars for Alhambra? Like five zero, okay.
Okay, is that fifty dollars per person who gives a contribution?
Uh, that's how their ordinance reads. When I researched the ordinance is what it's uh indicated on their work.
Okay. And was it San Gabriel you said that changed theirs? But I'm not sure why they changed it. It's identical.
That is one option you can take, Mayor Protam, and what that allows you to do is deal with the uh campaign committee issue. So if you do default to the state's guidelines, what that alleviates uh future council candidates from doing is just if you're or an incumbent from doing in the future is just having to go through the whole, you know, reestablishing a committee, bank account, everything else related to that. Um, again, similar to the, not similar to, but uh in the same vein of how we enforce uh Measure AA, even though we haven't had to enforce it yet, it's, you know, it will be something we would just be sending a letter out to each council candidate in their committee. Um, we'd be part of uh the city clerk's orientation as the uh city's election election official.
So you could basically adopt the or follow the Assembly Bill with a caveat that um you could give a denomination for whatever the council would be comfortable?
Yes.
For contributions.
Yes, and that's part of the reason why we brought this forward as well, because again, the city does have a history of doing campaign contribution limits and seeing that number and understanding, as the clerk has said prior, that um, understanding now that FPPC's role and their interpretation of AB five seventy one, we thought it was important to bring forward to you considering your prior uh legislative intent and actions.
Okay, and the current amount, I mean, I've never received a four thousand dollar contribution, but is that what we currently are able to accept?
You are bound by what's uh state law requires at this point as of January first of last year. Prior to that, I don't know, maybe the clerk or our our city attorney knows what that was prior.
And do you know?
I'm actually trying to look through the bill right now to look for the specific dollar amount. Um, but I haven't located it just yet. Um.
I thought, isn't it like forty nine hundred dollars for in the bill right now?
Um, Mayor, if I may? Um, when the bill was first enacted in two thousand and twenty one, the limit was at forty seven hundred, and it's been since adjusted to forty nine hundred. And then I also want to make a quick correction. I'm so sorry, City of Alhambra's uh limit is two hundred and fifty, not fifty. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. That's like.
Still, still restrictive. I mean, relative to the 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 bill, the bill number forty nine hundred.
Yeah, but I mean, that basically it's forty nine hundred per contributor, correct?
Correct.
This is correct.
That's a hell of a lot of money that you could receive if you chose to solicit that. Anyway, sorry.
All right, I I don't have any more questions for now. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to Councilmember Viscara, any questions?
Well, I'm finding this very educational. If we have our own, who's in charge of enforcement? The city is?
Currently with Measure AA, it is us. But again, that is in theory so far because we haven't had to enforce it. Um.
Does that mean Brian Cook will will be auditing what's coming in and?
And no, that would be the, that would be the city clerk generally in most cities, and that's what we would come back with with the ordinance as well, just to provide some clarification related to the enforcement component. Generally, it's the city clerk's office and the city attorney um that do that. Um uh, because of my role with you, it makes it a little bit tougher, but I mean, there is, we 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 have an obligation because theoretically, even under Measure AA, if there's a violation, that is technically a misdemeanor. So we would have a legal obligation and uh to enforce and in a ethical obligation to enforce that. So, yeah, I would, but the primary points of contact are generally the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office. And then.
Am I right in assuming that it's equally onerous in terms of of reporting, be it own ordinance or or the state, leaving it as it is?
Can you repeat the question again, Councilmember Viscara?
Is there any more responsibility to to say the candidate to us by by having our own ordinance as opposed to to just staying with with uh the state?
I I don't deal with the elections. I would defer to the city clerk. I don't, I wouldn't think so, but I would, I would defer to the city clerk or the city attorney.
I I would venture to say that you have to file the campaign financing report any way you run a campaign committee. So it is filed, it's public information. Anybody can look it up. So it's not any more or less onerous.
Yeah, I can. That's it. I don't have any more questions.
Okay, moving on, uh, Councilmember Chavez, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I have a few comments, but I'll wait till that portion of our discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think I, I get the gist of what's going on here.
Okay.
I I don't need any clarifications.
Right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem, Sternquist, any, any more questions?
No more questions, Mayor.
Yeah, uh, I don't have any questions either, thank you. Um, so at this point, I'd like to open for public comment. I ask any member of the public watching at home to call in at a Zoom number. Once you're on, the city club will make sure you're able to speak. Um, so we'll give everybody a little bit of time to call in. Uh, Madam City Clerk, um, are there any pa- callers?
Mayor, you, I do not see any callers on our list.
Okay, well, um, with nothing more from the public, in the reasonable time having been given for them to call in, I will close public comment and go back to the city council for final questions or comments, starting with Councilmember Mitt.
I'm not sure where to begin, but, uh, I I I think at least from my understanding of, of the staff report, it, it makes sense to establish our own ordinance because then the committee issue would be a lot less onerous. Um, in terms of own campaign contribution limit that's different than the state established guidelines, I don't have a number in my mind that I feel strongly about, that we should be different, uh, than what's there. Um, although to Mayor Protem, uh, earlier point, uh, that's a lot of money. I mean, I I think a- at least talking with other colleagues and candidates who've run for council races in, in some of our neighboring cities, I wanna say we're probably on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of, um, how much candidates usually expend for, for an election. Uh, and then now with with a few elections with no contest, we s- everyone spent effectively zero, zero dollars. Um, so I I I just, I I can't think of a reason now, but perhaps, um, others on council may may have a compelling reason to set a number different than, than what the, uh, uh, assembly bill has. Uh, but, but I I agree that we, we should establish our, our own ordinance, um, to, to retain our local control of that matter. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vescar, any final questions or comments?
Yeah, um, I guess I'm still suffering from a lot of ignorance on this. Uh, William, if you don't mind my asking you, wh- why would it, eh, do we see it as more advantageous to maintain our own?
Well, I, I think the, the ma- at least my understanding is if we don't do anything, then we, the, the provisions of the assembly take over, and that includes the part where the committees have to be kind of dismantled and reassembled. Um, every election cycle.
Oh, okay.
I understand you. Maybe city clerk, can, can you confirm that? Miss Quo.
Yes, that is correct, thank you.
Yeah, so I think for the sake of just anyone who, I mean, any one of us who raise money for a previous election, we're required to maintain the, the paperwork and the accounting on an annual basis. Um, and so I think that just kind of adds an additional level of paperwork to what, what's already there for, for any candidate moving to the future, so. Um, a- at least, that's my understanding when, when Miss Quo, you went through a lot of the cities from our neighborhood. It seems like most cities defaulted to the forty nine hundred by the state. Uh, but then didn't really do too much other than say, here's our own local ordinance explicitly stating that, so.
Correct, most of the, uh, other cities, surrounding cities only addressed the contribution limit. They did not address the, um, other restrictions or provisions of A B five seventy one.
Good, that's all I have.
Right, thank you. Uh, uh, Councilmember Chavez, any final questions or comments?
Well, for me, this is an easy one. I have a basic fundamental reluctance to default to anything that the state is doing. And so, um, to sit back and just say, well, yeah, we'll go with A B five seventy one as stated. To me, that makes no sense. Um, I would certainly like to, uh, develop our own ordinance, uh, look at all all issues rather than just the campaign contributions. Those who were around back in twenty sixteen, if you remember the so-called Temple City Government Accountability Act, it's several parts to it, but of course, I think the main goal was to provide a certain amount of transparency, and of course, we were still dealing with ethics issues back in that time as well, and we thought that this was the best way or best thing suited for our city, rather than be concerned about what the state wants us to do or what other cities perhaps do. I don't really see, um, enforcement as a, you know, going to be prohibitively difficult. I mean, it looks like in the foreseeable future, we're gonna be running our own elections anyway. And I'm assuming that we're still gonna keep the re- reporting requirements, and so anybody who decides to run for elective office is going to have to file these reports. And I think they are filed under penalty of perjury, and of course, uh, you know, uh, it'll be enforced like, like the other laws enforced by our city, so I don't see it. Also, I would, um, I would certainly lend my card lean towards the direction of, um, adopting our own campaign limit regulation rather than to default A B five seventy one. And as far as these other cities who basically are saying, uh, we're not gonna default to B five seventy one, but yet then they adopt it as their own, that that, I don't even know what that's supposed to mean. That just, that makes no sense whatsoever. That's just like just a matter of doing work, I guess, I don't know. At any rate, that, that, those are my feelings on that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mayor Protem Sternquist, any final questions or comments?
A couple of both, um, where was I? So I just wanna be clear in my mind, if we default to the assembly bill, is it five seven one?
Yes, ma'am.
We've default to five seven one to what I believe simplifies and makes things easier for current and future council members. We can put in an amount that this council is comfortable with as a limit.
Correct.
Okay, so I agree with, um, staying with A B five seven one and being able to change that limit. I also agree with Tom because it's the first thing that came to my mind is when we did the measure A A. And it was actually set in place, excuse me, to ensure that campaigns could actually not be bought in essence by a developer who came in or numerous developers, um, or contractors that we contract with to give large sums of money. And we felt that we were doing what was more than ethical, and I know quite a few cities were quite surprised by that. But they also applauded us for that. I mean, I'm just thinking that if we had, if I had ten people who would give me ten thousand, I mean, forty nine hundred dollars to support my campaign, that's forty nine thousand dollars. I have never spent more than five thousand dollars the two times I felt I ran for election and then reelection. Um, I'm also wondering, and, and this is a question for Kane, is if I had forty nine thousand dollars, just say from in my bank account for, um, future campaigns, this was what was donated to me. And say I only spent five thousand of it, I have forty four thousand dollars left that was donated to me to run for city council. Could that money in my account be used for me to run for assembly, to run for, uh, state senate, to run for higher office?
Yeah, that's a good question, and, and that's part of the reason why, uh, we're considering, uh, this ordinance now. But by default, A B five seventy one, and part of the reason why, um, i- i- it creates additional, uh, homework, i- if you will, is, uh, in attachment, uh, A pages one to three, it has a whole list of additional kind of requirements. One of them is, uh, including accounting and refunding if you don't use that money towards that election that you were fundraising for. Uh, so the, this ordinance gives us the option as a city to o- one, declare our contribution limits more or less than that forty nine hundred dollars, uh, set forth in this, uh, state law. And also choose whether or not we wanna include some, none, or all of these state, uh, restrictions on that as well. So it gives you a little bit of flexibility, uh, to turn, well, you know, how do you wanna do it?
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know if you said really yes or no, though.
Well, ba- based on, 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 if we a- a- opted into the state defaults, which is do nothing and follow the state rules, uh, you would have to refund all that money.
Okay.
Braced by other people.
Yeah, that seems extremely complicated. I don't wanna make things more complicated. I mean, just trying to file this online has been a nightmare that we all n- do now, but I, I think that to be more in alignment with what we decided with measure A A, I would, my feeling is, is that we should keep default, I guess, to A B five seven one and cut that um, forty nine hundred dollars in half, which is a little bit more reason, reasonable. It's still on the high end in my book, but I think it still allows flexibility. And to be honest, I really don't like people using the funds that were given to them for a city council election to run for, you know, a state senate seat, um, a, an assembly seat. I don't know. I mean, I, I know it's ethical and you can do it, but I just don't know if I'm really comfortable with that myself. But anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, I too, um, don't see the reason why we should follow A B five seventy one. I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the term, and I think all the cities might have default to, so to speak, to their campaign limit by, by having their own campaign uh, limitation with the default amount forty nine hundred. That doesn't mean that the other cities necessarily follow the other restrictions. I think it's the restrictions that don't make any sense here. Uh, for people who actually have run a campaign before, and, and I'll share my own experience. Actually, I've gone to banks before, and the, the bank simply says, sorry, we don't want you. Cause the amount that you're dealing with is so minimal, um, we actually lose money dealing with your fine, uh, campaign finance, so if we've default to A B five seventy one, so basically every time you run a campaign, you have to go go through that, all that again, you know, try to set up your committee, all that paperwork, and then go to bank and beg that they will allow you to open a bank account. And I actually, I have no problem with the campaign limit. I have no problem with even filing, but I have such a bad experience of banks not even wanna do business with me that I, I think A B five seventy one, it's like, you know, A B nine, other, other things, and I think that, uh, Councilmember Chavez put it so well. I mean, things that are set up at a state level most likely does not work for us at our local level because we're our own city, we have our own, um, we have our own, uh, requirements and limitations, and like, uh, Mayor Protem said. You know, our campaign here is so small, uh, it's, uh, we don't need the big money. I'm fine with forty nine or less, you know, that is really not the point. The point is that I'd rather have us incumbents or for that matter, new candidates, um, who want to run for our office, uh, to focus on public issues and rather paperwork. Uh, that really, and, and all the public financing are public anyways. And, and I think this city has a history, like the city manager and and Mayor Protem and Councilmember Chavez that mentioned. When we, when we, when we passed the, uh, measure A, the Temple City Accountability Act, we actually uh, made it very clear, made it very, very restrictive that no, no developers, no vendors doing business with the city can even donate to it, to any candidates. So I think we're, um, we're definitely, um, a more restrictive, uh, than the state had already allowed. So there's really no real reason, in my opinion, that we need to, with, that we need A B five seventy one. You know, A B five seventy one may apply to other, you know, other races, but definitely I don't see there's a place for that in Temple City, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask you? I thought if we were in alignment, that it sounded to me that it was an easier process with paperwork. It's not.
No, the S D R, you have to dissolve your committee every time if you are in incumbent under A B five seventy one.
Okay.
And like the city attorney had pointed out, if you have a dollar more in the, in your bank account, you have.
You have to refund.
Refund it.
Oh, no, I don't wanna do that, no.
Right, right.
Okay, got it.
A lot more paperwork, and we can, we can, the spirit of, of, of making it uh, risk, less, uh, more restrictive, I mean, we can, we can do that by ordinance if
Okay.
Want to, yeah.
Thank you.
So, I don't think we need a motion for that. I, I think we have enough discussion to, uh, for Mr. Cook and and Mrs. Tuing, Tu Yan, to, to, and, and, and Madam Clerk to, uh, go to the next step, I believe.
Yes, Mayor, you're.
Uh, I have a question. Does this mean that, that the forty nine hundred dollar restriction remains? Or, or are we gonna talk about making the net, uh, a lesser amount? How will that be determined?
That can be determined at during, uh, when you bring forward the ordinance, uh, yeah, if, if we bring a forward, former, forward the draft ordinance as appears to be the direction that the council wishes to go tonight, um, we can bring forward that ordinance, um, and, okay, and could we bring forward a first reading without the dollar amount? Or, and determine at the meeting? I, I would defer to you on that one, sir.
Uh, yes, I believe we can. I mean, as long as we set the framework, I mean, those are just, you know, minor adjustments to the actual substantive issue, which is a, a natural campaign contribution amount, so. Um, it, the, the main issue is that at the second reading, you can't change too much, but the first reading, you can make some adjustments.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Vescar, what you see is your draft, the, the sample ordinance that was provided by the city attorney's office and the city clerk's office would be kind of that template. And as, as you're going through your deliberations on the actual ordinance itself, which we're not, obviously not discussing tonight, but then you can, if there was some discussion just a few moments ago about what, there's some maybe differing views on that, or you may wanna come to some level of consensus, but you can take that opportunity during the ordinance.
It sounds like there'll have to be some discussion.
Yes.
And agreement.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is update from, um, the city manager. Okay, we'll move to the next item, which is update from um, the city manager, Mister Cook, any updates for us?
Mary, you, I'll be really brief, uh, uh, in my email, weekly email to staff, I um. Uh, last two, it said last two weeks has been rough is an understatement, it has been, uh, but. We have gotten through because of the folks that are online here, um, our executive staff. Um, they have managed incredibly well during a flurry of weekend calls and everything else with this COVID, with the Omicron variant. And um, it has not been without adjustment and services, it has not been in, and, and, but the continuity of services stay in place, so. Kudos to the entire team that are on the phone right now and every single employee who's out there, who is. Maybe doing tree trimming one day, filling a pothole the next, um, doing all those types of things to make it work, so. Thank you to Mister Matsumoto, to Miss Parkas, to Mister Reimers, uh, Miss Flores. Miss Nunez, Miss Quo, thank you all for your help, and thank you, council, for your continued leadership and understanding through this time. Uh, we could have not gotten through this time without some of the measures that we have taken over the last two years. Uh, with teleworking and other things as well to continue to provide the service, so thank you for your continued support as well. Uh, that'll be it for me tonight, Mary you.
Uh, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, a little more, I'm sorry, one more thing. Uh, Mister Arizome, do you just want to give a brief overview of the clinic? Uh, this, we had this last Thursday?
Yes, thank you, Mister Cook. Uh, last Thursday, we partnered with the LA County Sheriff's Department Community Advisory Council. Uh, who also contracted with the testing company to administer rapid and PCR testing in the city of Temple City. Which was open to all county residents. Uh, we had a slow start, but throughout the day, the event was a definite success. And we tested approximately three hundred and ninety seven people uh, during the event. And we will be having another event tomorrow from eight AM to four PM. Uh, again, it is open to all county residents, not just Temple City residents. However, uh, we do want to put the message out there that. Due to the site hours, the line will have to be cut um, to allow. Those that are in line to be finished by four PM, uh, and so. That was one thing that came up during the event was people were upset because we had to cut the line. Uh, so the line will be cut probably depending on how many people are there about one thirty PM, and so we do encourage people to get there early.
Uh.
Did you say tomorrow? Did you?
I'm sorry.
Tomorrow.
My, my, Thursday, yeah, I'm, my days are all just blended in one.
Uh, Mister Arizome, are we gonna have this every Thursday for a next few weeks or just this Thursday?
Uh, it'll be every Thursday until the numbers start to decrease, and so we don't have a definitive end date. Uh, it all depends on what the case, uh, positive case rates are throughout the county, and so. Uh, we anticipate this probably continuing through the end of January. Uh, and then it would probably be reassessed depending on what the uh, case rates are.
Great, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mister Arizome. Um, he's really been our go-to person throughout this whole pandemic. You see the. Every uh, twice a week, his uh, comprehensive uh, review and update, um, which um. Gives a good, excellent snapshot of what's there, so thank you for his continued work. That'll do it for me, Mary you.
Hey, Vince, before we leave this subject, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, absolutely, please.
So, so Brian, I, I was there early, what, what exactly was the role of the sheriff's department? At this test site? I mean, it seemed to me like the city certainly had a lot of people there. Uh, and and certainly the, the, who was the group? Harold Christian, I think, is that?
No, it was the, the testing company. So the role of the sheriff's department is they're the ones that are organizing the testing, so. They've contracted with the vendors to conduct the testing, and the city is uh. Uh, supporting the event by providing any facilities that, such as the Temple City Park. And any logistical support, so tables, chairs, and some staffing.
So is the sheriff, who's paying for all?
The sheriff's department is paying for it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, it, it just seemed, uh, and I, I. I know they're doing them at a few different locations, not just Temple City, right?
Correct, there's about ten to fifteen locations throughout the county now that they have partnered with.
Well, I thought, I thought it was very well run, I, it seemed to be, other than the fact it got started late, that was. Out of our control, but uh, everybody seemed to behave themselves, I don't, there were no incidents, were there, than, other than the fact that. You had to, I guess, turn people away at the last minute, uh, because the line's too long or something, or?
Correct, yeah. In, in order to allow the event and the testing um, workers leave by four. We had to sho- sho- uh, shut down the line. Uh, to allow people to go through. The average wait time, once everything was rolling, was about two hour wait per, in, in the line. And so if we shut down at four, then we wouldn't be out of there until six to maybe eight PM.
Yeah, just so those of you who weren't there, um, um, the line, when I got there, I got there about eight thirty. Line was from the pavilion down, um, what's the street that, uh?
Golden West.
Golden West, down, down Golden West, down west on, on Las Tunas, up. Hoffman, past uh, the entrance to city hall. That was the end of the line, and uh. The person who was the first in line told me they got there at six o'clock in the morning. And they had been waiting there since that time. Yeah, it was uh, interesting. They, they, like I said, it was a fairly well-run operation, and thank Brian for taking the lead on that, did a good job. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mister Cook, and thank you, Mister Arizome, for the report.
Thank you again, and I, like, like I said, Mister Arizome has been. Uh, an essential part of our COVID response from the beginning, from weekend calls to everything else. So I, I continue to thank him for all his support and work of not only for the community, but for staff as well.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next item is update from uh, the city attorney, Mister Thuen, Thu Yen. Uh, re- any, any updates from you?
No updates, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item is council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Uh, do we have any reports? I guess not. Uh, we'll move on to our next item, which is council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Starting with Councilmember Man.
Well, nothing in particular. Um, I, I did want to say I, I did walk by, um. Our upcoming new Primrose Park, and those shade structures are a lot bigger in person than I thought they would be. But it, it looks great. Um, it's, it's certainly come a long way since, um, I think the. Last time I went by and, and took a close look was uh, over a month ago, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that that's coming along, and, and I guess, similar to my last question at the last meeting, um. To maybe Mister Cook or Mister Matsumoto, we're, we're still on track so far with the um. With the construction progress.
I'll let Mister Matsumoto chime in.
We're, we're still looking to be on track right now. Some of the items were delayed, uh, obviously to the reins that we were having a few weeks back. Um, latter part of December, and then, um, what we've really been keeping an eye on is just if we're going to be experiencing any of those. Um, COVID impacts from contact tracing and quarantines. Um, so far, we've been able to weather it um, pretty well, so we're still anticipating a February completion date. Um, but we are keeping a close eye on that because we have seen that impact a lot of different industries right now.
Okay.
We have any material on the ships in Long Beach?
Uh, we did in the past, uh, previously, but uh, we've been able to complete all of those uh. Large shipment items, so um, as if you happen to stop by, like Councilmember Man had mentioned, you'll see a lot of those. Uh, structures going up, so um, we've been able to uh, get ahead of that, um, you know, the, the shipping delays.
Thank you. Yeah, and, and I know, um, we found out last council meeting that the uh, Lunar New Year celebration. Uh, for this year was, was canceled, so in, in light of that, I know bef- before. Our next council meeting, just want to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year for those who do celebrate it. The year of the tiger is incoming.
When is it, when?
Year of the tiger.
Oh, when?
Oh, when? I believe New Year is February first or January thirty?
I, I think so, February first.
February first, okay.
Yeah.
I always get my lunar calendar messed up, so I, I, I rely on, on Helen or my parents to remind me, so.
I rely on the internet.
Or the internet, yes, that's true. So, um, yeah, and until then, that's all I have, thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Biscara, any items from you?
Yeah, I, I too would like to compliment Brian and the city staff. I was there on last Thursday and. Hung around for a while and, and, and observed it. It was a very efficiently run operation. Too bad it had to start a little bit late, but it, I think it worked out well. And the other thing is, um. I, I think we should close in memory of, of uh, the uh, kids that were. Unfortunately killed last weekend. Um, I understand there were two Temple City young people, so I'd like to remember them. And that's all I have.
Right, thank you, uh, Councilmember Biscara, and uh, Councilmember Chavez.
Yeah. Did, did anybody know those families? I, I didn't, the names didn't look, didn't, I didn't, weren't familiar to me, I don't know. Did anybody know the kids?
Peggy said her son knew him, right? Peggy, since he was very young?
Yes, he knew one of the boys.
Hmm, that's terrible. You know, it's, it's funny, I don't know if anybody's noticed, well, it's not funny, but I mean, it's. I've been getting a lot of questions from people that I know that don't live in Temple City. And they keep asking me, what is going on in Temple City? Every time we pick up the news, there's somebody being killed or dying. Uh, I don't know if anybody's noticed that, but it seems like we've had some, a run of bad luck the, the last thirty to sixty days, for whatever reason, and. It's just a tragedy, and certainly when you lose young people like that, that's not a good thing. Um, I'm glad William brought up the Chinese New Year. Uh, I, I'm assuming that because it's a Chinese New Year. There's not going to be any, any uh, new date for that, or, or we. Do you know, William, if, if the groups who were going to put that on are gonna plan, or maybe Adam knows anything afterwards, or?
Sure, uh, I, I can answer that question, uh, Councilmember Chavez. Um, you're right, because it is a, a new year event, it, it just wouldn't make sense to postpone it. Um, you can't have New Year three months into the year, I guess.
Well, you could, but uh, it's, it would be certainly unusual.
Correct, so uh, we are still planning on decorating uh, Temple City Park uh, festively for the new year, so. Uh, we'll still continue to do that, and we are in discussion with the uh, group that um. That really runs the event, we, we support them. It's the Temple City Chinese American Association.
Right, right.
And um, one of the options we're taking a look at is maybe um, doing a cultural event later on in the year, so. Uh, one of the options that may present itself is the Moon Festival, if the World Journal is um. You know, not able to do it, or, or maybe we're running it in conjunction with them, so. It'll provide an opportunity, um, potentially for later in the year to, to do an event in the community.
No, that, that's a great idea, thank you. And um, and you're right about the park. I mean, you, I drive by, a lot of times when I'm coming back from work, I'll drive down Temple City Boulevard, then make a left on. On Las Tunas, and if you glance over to your right, you can see the, what, what are those again? I, I forget what the. The shades, I guess?
They're the uh, pedal shade structures.
I mean, the first time I saw that, I go, wait a minute, is that our park? I mean, it looks great, I mean, I, I, it, it really stands out, and I'm not sure how high the wall or the fence is going to be on the final. Park, uh, but it'd be nice to see those things, I mean, uh, they do look nice, and certainly they stand out, you can't miss it. Can't miss it, that's for sure, um, you know, I think it's gonna, it's gonna look really, really nice when we're done. Good job, and also I just want to remind people who are listening, or anybody who listens to this later, that. If you go to Jerry Jambezi's website, he has posted photos and videos. That he takes periodically to update the construction, so thank him, like to thank him for doing that, and you can see. The progression of the park and uh, how it's come along, but uh.
That's his work with drones.
Yeah, he has a drone, he does, in fact, have a drone that he uses, but uh, yeah, it, it, uh, it's very colorful, very colorful. I mean, it's, it may have to call it the Temple City amusement parks, you know, I don't know. Looks very nice. I say that in a good way, though. All right, um, other than that, and other than that, as I mentioned before, I want to thank Brian Arizome and his staff and. For all the work they've done, I mean, you know, we have to realize too, I think, that. Not only is it, is it great that we're co-hosting or helping with this event, but it takes a certain amount of courage for. Our people, I think, to stand out there at such an event and be part of this, I mean, uh. I mean, if you think about it, there's a lot of people online who potentially have COVID. And uh, you know, Brian and, and those who are working with them are surrounded by those people, and they have masks on, and of course, they're taking all the precautions, but. You know, the, these are, you know, like our frontline workers, or our frontline staff, uh. Um, I think our people have uh, really stepped up and, and uh, and done things, uh. You know, not, not that they're not caring for their own personal safety, but certainly uh. Uh, risking it for the betterment of the community, so, so in that way, I think it's a great thing that we're doing. Um, I think that's it, hopefully, um, you know, I just want to tell everybody to stay safe out there, that. You know, I read, we all read articles every day, and one day you read an article that the pandemic is slowing, that the numbers are getting better. And then you read an article said that, no, they're really not, so, you know, who to believe, and uh. You know, I just, I just urge people to not be in such a rush to um. To think this is over with, that, that just because the numbers are trending in one way or another, that we should. Uh, you know, not keep our guard up, and uh, I hope that we continue to do so. And, and once and for all, try to get over this hump, but I don't think we're there yet, so. But if we keep, oh, we're doing, wearing our mask and getting our vaccinations, I think uh, will help, that's for sure. Uh, that's it for me, Mary you, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Uh, Mayor Portem, uh, strength question, any items from you?
Um, I'd just like to ask our um, city manager if we could please get an update on. The library and the chamber um, site. So I, I don't think, I haven't heard about that for quite some time, maybe I keep forgetting to ask you, Brian, but where we are with that. And um, then Adam, I just thought, well, we talked somewhat a while back about engaging the chamber. A little more with um, some of the things that we do in the city, and I was wondering if maybe. You could reach out to them if you haven't, and see if maybe they're doing something with the businesses to encourage them, maybe to. You know, decorate their businesses for Lunar New Year, or, or be creative, and how we could maybe partner with them to do something. It's just a thought that, you know, came to mind. But um, if we could get those two updates, Brian, I would appreciate it. And thank you, Kane, for joining us this evening. And that's it, Mayor.
Right, thank you, Mayor Portem's strength question. Um, well, first of all, um, I also um, want to. Thank city staff of the well-run vaccination clinics, and also the recent uh. Um, testing sites, and I really appreciate city staff, uh. Mister Arizome, Mister Cook and staff worked so hard to bring uh, uh, these uh. COVID clinic and vaccination clinics to us, and, and I just feel that as a city, uh, where we have a duty. Um, because city can and has been, has the resources to go out and uh. Help our community uh, to fight this terrible disease, and thank you for all the. Uh, measures that Mister Cook had put in to keep, try to keep uh, our staff safe as well, so. Uh, and I too want to wish uh, everybody a happy Lunar New Year, and uh. So, um, so we'll see you on, uh, I guess, next year, next year of the tide. So, uh, with that, I'll move to uh, next item on the agenda, which is additional public comments on items not listed. Um, so at this time, um, I would encourage anybody at home to call in if you want to address the city council. So I don't see any callers. Uh Madame Clark, do you have any callers calling in to address the council?
No, Mayor, there are no callers and there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting like um Councilmember Viscara has suggested. So we will adjourn our meeting in the memory of the use of the unfortunate uh event and the car accident that happened, I think, uh Sunday night. Um, if I didn't get the names wrong, I think one of the, one of my company's use names is N B B. And the other is Ari uh Galak, Galaxon, uh both from Temple City. And I think there is another U from Monterey Park as well. So uh we want to adjourn a meeting in memory of all three of them. So with that, uh have a good night.